The House of Maine to order. All right.
First, I'd like everyone to stand and join in the signing of the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, can you please do roll call?
You're the bowler, Sean.
Here.
My bowler.
Here.
Tyler, phone him.
Here.
Scott, you're ready.
Here.
Eddie Waller.
Here.
Okay, was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting held on June 4th? Any corrections, additions, deletions?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same time. Okay, Craig Sears, I think he's gonna ask for some permission, I think, maybe one that has an idea about some Christmas decorations.
Yes, I was contacted by a good friend of our city, Louise Ray. She's the one who usually puts on the Christmas lighting her and...
Kathy Graves.
Kathy Graves. There's noted, basically, it's the Pennsy ladies have pretty much helped quite along with the Pennsy station, some of these things, these are several of the gallop. We have angels at the Elm Street Garage that we've been storing, that we used to put on the light poles down Monroe. And she was wanting to see if we could get about eight of them, they have some rope lighting taped on them right now. I could take them, she liked, I took pictures of them to show her, and she would really like to do something at Founder's Park along the wall. She'd like to get about six or eight of them, make some, she had some kind of an idea that she wants those angels placed on that wall. I would take them to powder, get them powder coated in paint and see it, and get some lights back on, and was permission to ask if we could possibly try that as a feature for our Christmas holiday time at the Founder's Park on that wall. And ask that possibly that we could get Jeremy to mount them, because I don't have any, really get them up there, but I don't really think there'd be any expectation for them helping with that, to get some, any good idea.
Is there anything else up there? Isn't there a wreath?
Big wreath? Yes, and in the left corner, above the kiosk, we have a big wreath up there, and I think, kind of, she was wanting to get some kind of stars, like angels going to heaven. I'm not real sure about her idea, she didn't draw any. We already have the decorations, there are probably four or five people, I would say, for us angels. Yeah, I think they're made out of like rebar, but they're white right now, but they're kinda dingy looking, and take off those rope lights and get them powder coated and put some LED, maybe a pop. It's not necessarily my idea, I just was...
You're just messenger?
I know what she's talking about. I'm not sure.
I'm up for a new Christmas decoration.
I think that Louise always does a great job with about anything she does for the city, so...
I know one thing, that everything I've ever seen her do is pretty much for us.
Yeah.
She's not gonna do anything already.
Right.
What do you think, guys?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we allow Louise to use the angels at Founder's Park this Christmas.
Good enough, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same time.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thanks. Okay, Brett Miller's here, you wanna talk about Lake Shores?
Good evening, Brett Miller, representing the Dryers and Lake Shores. We are, Kurt's gonna put some different drawings on the screen here, we're kind of babysitting the next twenty lots of Lake Shores, they're on the east side of Monroe Street Extended. And part of this, just as a refresher, the blue line is a county legal drain, with the legal drain, there's a seventy-five foot setback from the top of the bank. So, this is, you can see from the blue line, which is pretty accurate to real life, that seventy-five foot goes halfway into the lots to the west, and then obviously the city property is towards the east. So, I have went before County Surveyor's Office to request a seventy-five, a reduction from seventy-five to forty on the Dryer's property, which has been granted. And along with that, to allow these lots along the ditch to be buildable, I'd request from the Surveyor's Office to kind of shift that ditch to the east, straighten it out, clean it, and to give them a little more room to build. So...
So, you're proving the ditch?
Improving the ditch, cleaning it, right now, it's not a huge ditch, but it meanders and it's trees. So, I'm here before you guys, because a portion of this is on city's property. And, so, it would be shifting it to the east approximately, if the road is gonna stay the same, the road, the cul runner of the road is not changing, it's from there, it's gonna be, kind of, go to south, and then shift onto the Dryer. So, it would be moving it onto the city property approximately forty feet at the most. So, if you want to shift to the next, you would, Kurt, a little bit? So, right now, as the ditch lays with our, even with our reduction of the forty foot, it's one seventeen, one sixteen, one seventeen really aren't buildable unless we shift it to the east. If that makes, I'm making any sense here?
It's not buildable because of lack of space?
Yes. Unless they move the ditch so many feet, yeah, into our...
Into the city property.
And in that, clean up the ditch.
Yeah. You can kind of see the squiggle line in the middle, that's the meandering of the ditch.
Would that require getting rid of a lot of trees?
Yeah.
I think, I think that's my biggest concern with our water plant and our shooting range being there. I'm just curious how many trees that would be, because it's kind of a buffer, the trees are.
It would be on, they wouldn't, well, they shifted over forty, yeah, so you'd be losing at the most, yeah, forty foot strip.
Yeah, how, how much of that is woods? I mean, you're losing woods, but there's still be woods.
Well, there's a lot of woods. Can you go back to the first picture, Kurt, please? So, all that's still woods?
So, it takes, would take it back, but the backdrop's still all woods.
Yeah. So, like, this is another step, I guess, towards getting this constructed, right now, kind of go back to the drawing board, that right now, to build these twenty lots is not feasible. So, if we lose three lots, definitely it's not gonna be feasible. So, right now, they've kind of directed me to kind of look at...
Can you combine, can you make the three lots two?
Do that.
Can you make three lots two?
No, because the, it's the depth part. It's the east to west is what's hurting us.
He will call on you, Sealy.
Yeah.
I, I wonder if anyone's looked into the value of those trees? We have woods also, and every so often, we have, they're not taken out, because it's in the woods and grow, and those are very valuable. How do you reflect?
Good point.
Do you, do you live out there? What's your name?
Andrew Runcop, yes.
Okay.
We live on the one right next to where they're gonna be building.
Okay.
Lot eighty-one. There's one between us and the road.
Okay.
So, are, are the Dryers wanting to purchase the land? I mean, if we're moving forty feet by three lots, which is, what are those, probably a hundred foot?
I have not entertained that to them.
Were, were they just asking for us to give it to them?
Yes.
Oh.
That'll, based on my figures back here, that's gonna put the range within less than eight hundred feet of property, like residential property.
In that diagram, what is the fire?
Kurt, can you just bring up regular GIFs, please?
Thank you.
Right, right, yeah. So, the part that, so there's the firing range, and the part we're looking to shift over right there, to that part right there.
Right, so I mean, that does, I guess it does it...
I've told residents, because I live in the neighborhood as well, that if you were back at the fire range and see how and where they shoot, the residents of Lake Shores are not in any danger. The way it's set up, the way it's angled, to me, it's very safe back there. And this portion of the woods is far from it. There's other parts that are closer to it.
So, how many lots is that a fact, Brett?
Three.
Three. How wide are those lots?
Two for sure.
How wide are those lots?
These lots are around a hundred and ten feet wide.
So, you're about three hundred and thirty feet by forty feet deep, maybe?
Yeah, the forty feet at the most, it's kind of a tapering triangle.
Or, just so you get the house as a fit on the setback, is what you're trying to do? So, they're gonna not gonna have a yard really much at all?
Those aren't, there's not much backyard, it's gonna kind of die straight down.
To the ditch?
Even.
Right.
Obviously, just like, we're trying to keep the, you know, these are gonna be the same restrictive covenants as, you know, the rest of the addition, so these are gonna be big, you know, big homes, trying to make these really nice, you know, lots.
Let me know. We have, Danny, have someone there?
Sir? Oh, yeah. You have a comment?
I need Steve DeMol, I also live out there. Yeah, my only question would be, is we're talking about the trees, if we're gonna take out all those trees, is there any plan to put? Because it's still gonna be a buffer, just three places, trees. Would you put your buffer, you know, your tree buffer back in, because you're just kind of moving, moving the crack?
Well, those trees would be, have to be put back onto their property, the homeowners, because the ditch is gonna move into our property, so the property that would be open up would be the homeowner's property.
Yeah, I was understanding that there was, it's gonna shift over this facility, mom had the, was it the eight foot, I don't know what's...
But, right, but if you have trees and now it's a ditch, you can't put trees back there, so the trees are gonna have to go into the people's backyards. If you, if you see what I'm saying.
I'm saying we're not ready to begin right there.
Right, because if you move a ditch over where the trees were, you can't put trees back there, because it's now a ditch. So, now, the only spot to put trees back in would be their backyard.
Is it, the ditch can move forty foot or even?
Yeah, he's talking the ditch.
If he, well, they would go coinciding.
Right.
So, the property line, the city was still on the same ground, the plan, as we're doing today.
We would just own, we would have the ditch on our property.
Yeah, well, I mean, the ditch is already on your property, what you're doing is you're losing forty foot of buildable space. If you wanna, the ditch is already on your property, we'd be destroying these and reducing what you can build on by forty feet.
If you don't have to build a lot of trees... You can already see through that woods, when you go out there at night, we go out and check the plants. I'm afraid you take much more of it out there.
We've never given property to a developer.
I mean, I get it, but you're also, I mean, I'm not trying to play devil's advocate here, we never give a property to a developer, but how many lots are there that are gonna go in there?
Twenty.
Right. And if there's twenty lots don't get built on, then we just lose all that tax base of twenty, these are small homes, these aren't small homes. I get, I get it, you're not saying the other way.
I don't want to hinder development at all.
Right.
But I'm saying, we said to President, by just giving land to somebody to sell it, you know, to increase the value of their property.
Right.
I mean, we didn't pick what they bought and what they developed.
I get, yeah.
So, is there something a better option than be to take whatever they had to be and develop on that property? And they can just do what they want, it's theirs.
Well, what is it, twenty lots, and they're gonna sell for fifty, sixty thousand, probably?
It's gonna have to be north of sixty.
Sixty.
It's, there's the line between, we need housing, we want housing, they want to maximize what they can build in that area. And to do that, we have to lose a little bit of...
We have to put it up for a bit, that other people can take it.
City property.
Yeah, just give it away.
You move a ditch. I also walk the line of, I'm President of the Homeowners Association, and I've had at least a dozen calls of people, when are these lots gonna be for sale? They want to buy lots to build on.
I want that, I want that forty by three feet.
I want to work with the developer and the want of the citizens.
I'm not sure.
But this is the first I've heard of a ditch problem issue to develop that end. That's why we're here.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think, I don't know if it, where it was, had they missed the long, you know, in the nineties, you know, they're kind of, they're patched, I mean, they're, this is the only space that there is, so that's why I'm here.
So, will the lots not fit a house, or the house you want to fit on the lot?
The house, the association would like to build there, that's big of house.
With a minimum square footage.
Do you consider changing it for these three lots?
And the other...
I don't think the association would like that.
So, when you talk about the setbacks, are you talking about the front yard setbacks, like the, or are you talking about restrictive?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Well, when you're talking about the setbacks in the buildable area with the existing, with the ditch in its existing place, you're talking about rear yard setbacks?
You say seventy-five, pull it from the top of the bank?
Yeah, and we've gotten, I reduced to forty. By the Surveyor's Office, that's the least they can go.
Right.
Because it's, it's still gonna remain a county drain, so they have to have space to, you know, maintain the ditch.
In fact, I anticipate some homeowners buying two or three lots and building big homes through, through this stretch, because they want that backdrop of the woods as their backyard. Or the ditch, and then woods.
And right now, two of those three lots are flooded out at a hundred and ten foot width?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. So, if you combine two of those, then you've got a two hundred and twenty foot front edge, where you could rotate, I mean, you could rotate the home around...
Someone could build a very long, not as deep house, that is true. If my fear isn't them losing a lot, then it's just, the numbers are tight.
Okay.
No, I get it, and that's, that's where we're at with housing right now, that's why everybody's struggling with housing. Again, I don't want to hinder development at all, I just want to make sure we're making the right legal steps. I don't, I would have to have Ann check into it, whether we can just give land away. I mean, every time we sell anything, we have to have bids, we have to, I mean, or an auction. I just want to make sure we do it legally. I don't want to stop development.
Jim, Jim Heinman, I'm Vice President of HOA. There was talk about the size of the home, is there a proposed minimum square footage? There, there is in the previous...
I think that's the commerce...
Yeah.
So, I think that we've, I guess, verbally agreed that we, the Dryers want to maintain what's already existing and nothing less. I'm not discussing by increasing it, but want it to be less than what I think the covenants today.
If that's true, the lots are smaller, is that correct, in width, than in the previous subject?
I think this is a discussion for a different meeting, this isn't, we're, this isn't for council. That'll have to be in HOA meeting.
So, they don't want a thousand square foot house, or twelve hundred, I think we have fifteen hundred as a minimum for a one-story.
Yeah, like thirteen thousand square feet, roughly, that we're talking about here, but, anyway, I don't, I guess we're technically not giving it up, we're just, we can't build on it, it's still a property.
Right, what's their...
But I think Ann would have to look into it anyways, so...
Right, what's their timeline? Like, are they, were they hoping for a decision tonight, or is this, I mean...
Um, doesn't have to be, you know, last week, I, we were hoping to have bulldozers out there, and then now, we got closed back, and we're kind of backpedaling a little bit, so, this was gonna, whatever, they told me to gather information and read the meeting, so...
It was recently surveyed, the Dryer family has been waiting on Fleming, they wanted to do the work, they wanted to do it last fall, and they were, Fleming didn't have the availability, it was gonna be this spring or summer, so, now here we are.
Fleming could start tomorrow, but the numbers don't make sense right now, so, we're trying to think about which way we have the options. And, and, I just, I know we, if this gets tabled and discussed, that's perfectly fine. I'm perfectly fine if this, if it would ever get approved, that it'd be tied to them actually doing something, I'm afraid it may sit for, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, if that's a stipulation, that's...
I guess, Mayor, what are, what are you wanting Ann to look into?
Well, what options we have when disposing of land, I mean, and did you say, so, I know you got the forty foot setback, you got that from the Surveyor's Office, did they give you permission to move the ditch?
On the, on the Dryer's property? No, and obviously, city's property.
Okay.
So, you're already moving the ditch, Tom?
Yeah, we can move it, what we want on the Dryer's property.
But that doesn't give you enough, you still need forty more feet.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the one that really got hurt is the, the Dryer's property is getting us, it's helping us with one thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Oh.
Where it comes back onto them.
Okay.
Helping us on those lots.
That one fifteen is the real, that's the real kicker, like, that's the, where the ditch takes the most out of a lot.
Mm-hmm.
At the end?
Yes.
Would it work better cleaned up?
It'll work better if it's cleaned out.
Straighter and cleaned out would be an improvement.
I would say have Ann look into it, I mean, maybe that, if the Dryers were in that, you're coming from down, just giving it away, so if there was an offer made, I mean, the big land's not valuable to anybody else except them and us, but maybe not start giving a land waiver free, if they want to make us an offer, I'd like to walk out there and see how close it is actually to the shooting range before.
Just, just I want to make sure, but there would be no transferring of property from the city to them.
It's just moving it into, just putting it...
Okay, okay.
You would be reducing what you could do with the property.
But are you able to space?
Okay, okay, that's, that's my mistake, that's my condition.
So, you're just asking to move the ditch further onto our property, and also take the trees off of our property?
But if you go, if you go back to the full image of the woods, could you?
Still adding to there and then decreasing ours, so, I mean, there is...
See, if you look at that blue line, if you look at the whole woods, that blue line is really a very small portion of that woods, is what they're asking for.
Right.
To develop, this is twenty lots of seventy, they want to do this in several phases, this is just phase one, the overall plan is seventy more homes through this swoop back down through Peckway Road.
Right, but also, do you know what forty foot by three hundred and thirty foot of all woods looks like? If it's gonna be removed?
But again...
That's a great deal of trees.
Right, and it may have value, and I'm not saying we shouldn't look into it, but I'm saying from the overall picture, there's still, there's still a lot of wood, they're taking a little bit of woods, asking to take a little bit of woods.
So, will the, the rest of the woods further south from your mouse pointer, to your left of the range, will all that section eventually be developed too?
East of the ditch is not gonna be developed, so where Kurt's cursor is, that's gonna remain woods to the east there.
So, the plan is not to straighten the ditch up all the way down that property line?
No, it's gonna take, it's gonna, that angle, and it, when it goes south, it kind of meanders a little bit, it's gonna get pushed to the east just a little bit. So, there won't be any woods west of the ditch, when this is all done, there won't be any woods west of the ditch, and even really south of it.
If you look to the south of that image, there's a cul-de-sac road, and then further south is two more cul-de-sac roads out towards five fifty. That's the way it develops, is down that way.
So, all the trees to the left, where is Kurt's, are all those trees will be gone?
Those will all be gone.
That range can throw...
And those will be gone, actually, as part of this section, because we need the dirt, so they're gonna start up another pond, so that'll be better.
The range to that property line is under four hundred. Right out.
Right.
So, there's gonna be no woods to the property line, is the plan?
So, where is cursor is, all that woods between there and the blue line, those will stay.
Okay.
On the west, that whole little area in there, that will stay woods.
I got you, okay.
Everything on the other side...
So, you're not touching the ditch down there, this up there?
Not right there, that ditch is all, go south, about right there, all that stuff to the east, none of that to change it.
Okay.
That's staying the same.
Right. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll be like six hundred fifty two.
Okay. I was curious, I didn't really realize where exactly.
Yeah, this affects the shooting range way more than any other one.
Then that first part up there.
I just saw this first in drawings on a nap, Dean Dryer's living room, of, this is the way I want it to look, he had it in his head years ago, now, now it's putting it to actual fruition, or trying to.
So, if there really, if there isn't a question of land acquisition or a transfer of property, it is more up to council as to how you want to proceed, if there needs to be additional discussion about whether or not it would be a gratuitous transfer or use, or whether there needs to be any consideration for the loss of value or use of city-owned property, those would definitely, you know, those are valid, valid concerns and a valid basis to give this additional thought and not make a decision, so, yeah, an option to table for this evening and come back with a decision at next meeting is certainly an option. Kevin, do you have concern about the shooting range and distance and loss of trees and...
Yeah, I mean, the, the trees are what puffers the sound the best, that small area have the, have the greatest impact on sound.
In the end, to the county, right?
We can't do, can't do anything about the property.
It is, it is, people buy, buy a lot.
Yeah. As well as safety, you're just, putting your homes that much closer, if we do shoot in the southerly east direction on the range, kind of where that mouse pointer is, that's the direction to shoot, we've opened up a small section in the opposite corner of his mouse. We've opened up just a small section there that is for extra distance shooting through rifles. I mean, we're shooting... Those would definitely, you know, those are valid, valid concerns and a valid basis to give this additional thought and not make a decision. So yeah, an option to table for this evening and come back with a decision at next meeting is certainly an option.
Kevin, do you have concern about the shooting range and distance and loss of trees and?
Yeah, I mean, the trees are what offers the sound the best. That small area have the greatest impact on sound.
To the county, right?
Can't do anything about the property. As well as safety, you're just putting your homes that much closer. We do shoot in the southerly east direction on the range, kind of where that mouse pointer is. That's the direction to shoot. We've opened up a small section in the opposite corner of his mouse. We've opened up just a small section there that is for extra distance shooting with rifles. I mean, we're shooting away from those things, but it will be a concern for people always.
I don't think we're in the area to give you the decision. And I saw this motion to table that and do a little more researching.
Yeah, I mean, do you want to take, take a chance to go out and look at it?
Yes, I'm just, I'd make motion to table it for the mayor.
A motion second to table this until the next meeting and the other discussion. Brett, anything else?
Is there any? I guess someone will get with me if you need information from me or any questions, so.
I think I got the ticket.
Okay.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, sign. Thanks, Brett. We have somebody here from Lifewise Academy. You want to, Mrs. Bittner, right?
Yep.
Yep. She wants to introduce herself and talk about a new program that she's trying to start in Decatur.
Hello, City Council members and members of Decatur. I am Vanessa Bittner. I've been a lifelong resident of Decatur, Belmont graduate of 2016. And I'm really excited for Lifewise Academy to be brought to Decatur. Are any of you familiar with Lifewise, heard of it? So it's at, this program is already established in Adams County, or Adams Central in South Adams Schools. Belmont is the last one to establish this. So our program is by legal definition, release time for religious instruction. There has been a law on the books for many, many years that public schools must allow students to be released from their class during the school day to get a Bible education. It must take place off the school property. Parents have to give permission for it and has to be privately funded and then not funded or represented by the school. So we work with Belmont. So I am the program director for North Adams, which basically means I've been working to establish a program. And once it's launched officially in our school, I will be running the day-to-day programming, scheduling, working with volunteers, doing trainings, fundraising, doing church presentations, leading orgs, et cetera. So our program is Lifewise Academy. It is established in, the first location was in Van Wer, Ohio. And that launched in 2018. And students, you know, they were released. They get a education through Lifeway Curriculum, the Gospel Project, if you're familiar with Children's Curriculum. And so, and it is now spread to over 330 systems in the country in several states. And it serves over 31,000 students every single year. So 31,000 students are released during the day to get a Christian Bible education as part of their curriculum. So the way our program will work is they will be dismissed during their library special class. The elementary school students, they do a rotation every day, a different special class, art, music, library, gym, and computer class. So students instead of going to their library classes, they are in the Lifewise program. They will be picked up by our private transportation, which is most likely going to be a school bus that we own. Bus to our off-campus location, which is currently at Cornerstone Community Church, right there by the school. And they will learn a Bible story along with a character development trait or, so that goes along with the story. So if they have a story about Daniel and the lioness, then our character trait that week might be about courage. And then we would go over, okay, what does it mean to be courageous? When can you show courage? When he needs courage? And then they get to carry that with them. And then after that, the students are returned to their normal school programming. So we've seen a lot of why we need this is because we have a all-time high in anxiety and depression in students. Low confidence, they are, Bible literacy is at an all-time low. Church attendance, school attendance. And this program offers to kind of change that. So the impact we've seen at Adams Central and South Adams is they've been established, Adams Central started this past school year. In January they launched and South Adams started the year before that. Both programs have between 60 and 80% enrollment. So that means 60 to 80% of students that are in the grades of their programs. I believe they both do K through five. 60 to 80% of the public school students leave school and get a Bible education. And right away, parents and teachers have noticed a positive difference in their children since beginning in the program. The change is actually quite remarkable. The most right away, students are more excited to go to school. Their school attendance is better, their behavior in class is better. They treat others with kindness and respect more often because every single week they are getting this Bible-based character development where they realize, okay, we need to be kind. We need to respect our teachers, it's important to go to school. And they're excited to go to school because they get to go to Lifewise. I've had a lot of people ask, so this program has been in mainly like students who aren't church. Initially, parents will sign them up because parents always love another opportunity to send their kids to church. And then I've had a lot of people ask how we reach the unchurched students. And it's very simple. It's mostly peer pressure because the student who gets to go to Lifewise, they get to ride a big red school bus. They get to go do activities and get a skill set pretty much every single week. And so they come back and they tell their other school classmates that they've had just a great time at Lifewise and if they can go. And oftentimes, if kids make a big enough bus, parents will be like, alright, it's not that big of a deal. We'll let our kids go. And it's completely free to the families, which is really, really special that they are able to do that. So for our local program, our steering committee was formed in 2023. And you have to get school board approval. This was right before an Indiana bill was passed where schools had to, the school boards had to allow students this program, not Lifewise, but a Bible education release time. And so, but we did have to get through school board approval. The steering committee did a presentation very similar to this one, just telling them what this program was all about. And then our plan is to launch our program for grades first through fourth this school year. Hopefully in between October and November is our potential launch date for that. So we will be launching this year. Our future plans don't stop at just fourth grade. In the 2026, 27 school year, we will be launching our high school program, which offers a Bible class for high school students as one of their electives for high school credit. They could also do a version where they get college credit, dual credit through Ohio Christian University, which if you're familiar with Belmont, Belmont loves dual credit. They love that program. And this is just another opportunity to get another college credit. And in the 27, 28 school year, we will launch our middle school program for grades fifth through eighth. And one thing that's really exciting too, it's not just for our elementary students. We will also be giving a high school intern program. Every semester, two high school students will become interns with our program. And they will get hands-on ministry experience, which is incredibly valuable and priceless as ministry leaders. It just sets them so much far ahead if they're planning on going into ministry. So a lot of this is only able to happen through prayer and consideration from our community, volunteers, and financial sponsorship. We have lots of volunteer opportunities. It can be a classroom volunteer, administrative volunteer, transportation volunteer, or a leadership board member. And we are also currently hiring for a lead teacher and bus drivers. Like I said, our, our students have to be bused off campus. And even though Cornerstone is very, very close to Belmont, we, it is further than Lifewise has a 1,000-feet distance of walking. So they cannot walk. So, and we are just currently looking to hire a lead teacher. So if any of you know anyone with ministry experience, please feel free to reach out. And lastly, student sponsorship. As you can imagine, with this being privately funded, it is very expensive. And we critically rely on private sponsors, business sponsors, church partnerships. I've reached out to several businesses in Decatur and asked for donations. So if you got one of those, please consider donating to this program. And you can also personally sponsor students. It takes $30 for each student for each month to run the Lifewise program. That includes staff members, curriculum, resources. We currently do not have an expense for rent, but we are looking into purchasing land and building and ministry building eventually. And obviously, all that costs money. So I just thank you all for taking the time to listen to me give this presentation. And I don't think I can emphasize enough how much this program is going to change Decatur, our students, just the way that our kids are raised up in the world that is how it is today. So thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Quiet.
If you would like any more information, I do have information packages that I give to y'all as well with my information card. So if you're connected to a church or a business and you would like me to give you more information, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Jamie, you want to give us an update on the domain name?
So, I don't know, a couple of months ago or so, we received a notice from Mike Brown, who's head of the IT for the county and it was the city as well, that we needed to pursue a domain for our website that ends in IN.gov. This is because it helps with cybersecurity issues and to allow us to get grants from the state. Just for improvements, each city and county has to have a domain as IN.gov to be able to receive those grants. There's certain naming rules to follow for the IN.gov. And so we are cityofdecatur.in.gov. And Armanda, who does our website, has been working through that. She actually, as of today, this afternoon, it launched. So the decatur.in.org, if anybody goes to that website, it'll automatically redirect them to the cityofdecatur.in.gov. Along with this change, emails will also have to be changed. And that's something that the county has hired a firm to help with. They're working directly with Armanda to make sure everything goes smoothly on our end. I don't know the timeline of when that's actually going to be implemented, but I do know that everybody will, their emails will automatically be redirected again for some amount of time. And you'll still have access to that email. Again, I don't know what that timeline looks like, but it was for the security and to be able to receive grants.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's happening all over the state. All cities and counties are pretty much being pushed into going this way.
My, what happens to the old emails, like archived or saved?
I know, I have that same question. So that's something I'm gonna find out.
Okay.
Because I have a lot in there that I save in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that's something that'll continue to work.
Email them to your new account. Hey, hi.
I know we'll have access for a certain amount of time. I just don't know what the timing looks like. But like I said, the website is changed over. So it's cityofdecatur.in.gov. The emails will be, like right now, it's @decatur.in.org. It'll be @cityofdecatur.in.gov. That's it. I'll keep you updated as far as when the emails are ready and what that whatsoever looks like, but that's all I have for now.
Okay. Thanks for the update. You might want to tell people that you changed that. And you might want to bookmark the new address and get rid of the old one.
Yes.
So whenever the.
It's going out on bill, I think next month is whenever all of that will happen. And I'm gonna get a social media post out and send it to the media, I think probably on Thursday. I just wanted to make sure it was all.
I doubt it's highly bookmarked, I guess. It might be for some people.
Yeah, but it'll, if you go to decatur.in.org, it'll come direct, it'll redirect you automatically right now.
Right. And do we have to pay for both domains then, I guess, until, so just until we quit paying for the one that we wouldn't access to the actual website?
Yes. Well, we, the IN.gov is completely free.
Yeah.
But we are still paying for the decatur.in.org. And Armanda says we should continue to do that like that, just in case anything ever happened.
The IN.gov adds another layer of security through the state.
And it is free.
But it's so secure, half of them you can't open without going through all these steps to open an email.
Yes.
Which is a little frustrating.
Yeah. Okay. Kevin D. Hello.
Hi.
Well, despite the smile on my face, Officer Luke Grumschlag had an injury he sustained at the end of March. His canine tendon broke his, I don't know what it was, something in his foot, ankle. Been dealing with that since, I can't remember the name of the bone. Been dealing with that since, I can't remember the name of the bone. Still on light duty. He's made the difficult decision. He's stuck him down to the K9 program. So, the dog that we had acquired has been in Allen County ever since. They've been taking care of the horse because we couldn't bring him home because it's a 80-pound toddler that he had wanted to risk hurting his foot anymore. Our department just momentarily is in a bind because I have Officer Collier and Officer Roby, who'll be going to police academy in August. I also have, well, I did have two officers who expressed to me they were looking at employment elsewhere, but that's now down to one. It doesn't make any scheduling sense to send anyone to the next K9 academy in August, which is also the exact same timeframe. The other two will be at basic academy. Allen County is interested in this dog. It would be getting used. It wouldn't just be living in a kennel. And we could revisit the K9 program next year and reacquire a dog at that time. It would not be, the prices that we discussed are fair. We're not going to be out much money at all. It's hard just for the, what they have been, for the housing and taking care of it, probably pay more money versus the difference in what we paid for the dog. So, I'm just looking for permission to sell this dog to an agency that would use it. Because right now, we don't, we don't have anyone that can use it, but just set an kennel, which is unfair to the animal. It's a dog, it's affordable, it's trainable.
Make a motion, accept the chief's recommendation.
Second.
Motion second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
He just got his letter resigning. He's not resigning from the department, he's resigning from the program.
Okay. Motion to make that a matter of record. Motion second. Motion by Scott, second by Tyler. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
We made the motion to resign.
Scott.
Scott.
Tyler.
All right. Jeff, Jeff talked to the Board of Works about resealing the asphalt at Safety Park. He needs to approach council about using, he'd like to ask to use our ARPA funds for it.
So, like the mayor said, I approached Board of Works earlier this evening. It came to light in our annual Safety Park Board meeting that the roads in the village have not had any maintenance to them as in feeling since it was built, and that was over 30 years ago. It was brought, like I said, to the Board of Works. And the option one that they, Craig suggested is they'll fill the cracks, they'll broom everything off, they'll squeegee the first coat on, and then they will spray the second coat. Squeegee in the first coat, they'll give it all the nooks and crannies and everything, and then they'll spray the second coat on. And that price is $5,059 to do. And that's including restriping of everything that is striped already. Excuse me, so, question, use our ARPA funds to pay for that?
So, we don't have a budget for maintenance for that facility?
We do. It's an individual budget. It's, Safety Park is an incorporation. The money we have saved right now is to replace the deck on the survival live house. It has to be done this year. It's for the city. So, we don't have any money to do that. And it's actually, has been brought into the city. I'm trying to remember how many years ago that city took ownership of that area. This one, one must still there.
So, they ask us for $5,059 to be used out of our ARPA funds.
How much ARPA funds are left?
It's over $600.
Will it look good, or will you see all the squiggles of where the cracks are?
I think you'll, it'll look a lot better than what it does.
And you said that's, is that striped in it too?
Yes. I think there's putting wood stripes in there, crosswalks, everything that could be replaced.
Is it good enough that it doesn't need to be replaced if it's been there for 30 years?
This gentleman said it's still stable, yes. But if we don't do it in the next one, two years, that can change.
Then it'll be a matter of repaving the whole thing.
How often is that striped? Just curious.
The last time it was striped, we had some trustees from the jail. Jeremy supplied the paint, and they went down and painted everything that was already painted.
Okay.
It's probably been 10 years now? No. I'm going to say at least 10.
Okay.
It was back when Shane was still Jeremy's son. That comes down over the rest of that. That's when we can get the trustees out.
I think it's an important feature of our city. I'll make a vote to allow them to use the ARPA funds for this project.
Second. Motion second. Is there more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Same side. Okay. Thank you, Jeff. All right. I think Kevin has some preliminary budget discussion. Yeah, I sent you guys an email. Now, I start thinking about employee raises for next year. That's one of the biggest ticket items on the budget every year. So, once we can get that, at least dialed in, there doesn't need to be a for-sure answer tonight, but at least an idea so I can start plugging the numbers in, see, see where we fall. So, I don't know if you guys have thought about it, if you wanted to...
What has been our increase over the last couple of years?
Last year was 3%. Year prior to that was, I think it was a dollar amount rather than a percentage. And that was, I think, with the COVID year too also. So, there was a little extra in that with the ARPA money.
Do we have some making up that we need to do because of COVID?
Uh, that COVID year, there was actually a bonus in there. It was a normal, 3% has been the average, I would say. Since I've been around, I've seen probably 0% to 5%. And then some years, it's been decided to do dollar amounts rather than a percentage. I just wanted to get your thoughts so I can...
What constitutes taking it up over the 3%? Like what would have to be in place or...
Nothing necessarily. It's just, we have to have a fundable budget. And I'm not saying that would put us over not being fundable, but, and we can always, you can always lower it. And even after, once it's submitted to GLGF, it can be lowered. It can't be raised past that point. So, if you decided after the fact you wanted to go up higher, that can't happen. That's not till September, October. So, we have some time till then, till it's sent to them. But yeah, like I said, this is what, all the department heads and everybody else base it, it's everybody's biggest line item. Once we can get that plugged in, we can start having discussions of overall budget and see where we, where we fall and where if we can move from that.
I know we, we're going to need to prepare for some insurance increases too. Kevin and I have met, can't sing with PHP, and we're going to see a jump. So, we need to keep that in the back of our minds too. We've, we've been, well, I know in the last four years, we've been really good about eating those jumps in insurance. We've made some minor changes to it. There's always options. We've never really passed it on to the employees in the past.
That's almost as large a chunk of the budget as insurance. We have wages and then insurance is the biggest, next big one.
Wages, insurance, benefits, and personal stuff. And a lot of things are, yeah, affected off that too. Once we have budgets, then fire contracts and all that's based off of, off of those budgets also. So, I just, I don't need anything in stone, but if you guys are leaning a certain way or if you guys want to discuss it, that way I can just, I can plug in a number and give that to the department heads to plug into theirs. We'll be talking about this budget for the next two months. And also, if you guys have any items for next year that you are looking to see possibly wanting done, and where we might be able to fit those in, if you have some items that you'd like to see in there, get with me and we can go through that kind of stuff. If we can get a baseline figured out, and then, I guess that's, probably every meeting from now till October will be some sort of discussion about this.
The new building on Elm Street, is that in the plans to budget?
That is part of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We've been talking for several years of the need of another building at the Elm Street property to get all the equipment inside there. And in that, there's still some equipment being stored in Mark's building that need the place to go.
Well, the county's been very generous there. Every time I see a couple of them, they comment about getting their stuff out.
Yeah. They own the quantity. We've had our stuff in there for over a year.
You think we should have an executive session to talk about options, voting options?
Yeah.
There's another option out there, but it would be a perfect case for an executive session to talk about it.
I don't know if we want to set it now or we set it through an email. I can pick a date for an executive session just to discuss it.
We can do all that over email, as far as one that isn't. It just needs to be...
I'll get an email out tomorrow to survey everybody for a date, and we'll try to get an executive session in.
Okay.
I'd say at least 3%.
Do we need like a motion that we're going to set up, an executive session? We didn't set a session, but I didn't know if it needed to be a session that we're going to.
We just have to advertise it.
Right.
And we can't do any less than 3% if it's the way they come now and expect to keep employees now. I don't like setting it up there, 5%, and saying we're going to take it back because it's just a disaster in the end. I know last year, I think we did a 3% raise, and the police got a pretty hefty raise, and it was tight at the end of the, when Phil's was trying to get the final budget around. It was, I don't know if you can handle more than 3% actually from what...
We had to take stuff out.
Yeah, we were dropping stuff out of the budget just to get in the budget.
Okay.
And we were only at 3%. So, if we go to 5%, it's just, DLGF's going to kick it back.
Well, like, and I think I've explained that before. A lot, a lot of people think that we get to set up our budget and hand it to them, and they get to say yes or no. You get these dollars, make it work. So, it's up to you to figure out how to spend it within your city. But that's not just a wish list we get sent out and they say, go forward or not. This is what you get, make it work.
I like Scott's suggestion, budget at 3%. And if we have to reduce from there, we will have to.
And if the budget comes in and there's room for more pay raises in 3%, we can still do that before it's submitted.
Yeah, yeah. Right. It's just once you submit it, you can't go up.
Correct. But if we get the preliminary budget and there's room in there, then it's an option at that point that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Just because we save 3%.
To be fair though, it's usually the preliminary budget's usually not short. We worked out from there.
Yes, it's how the department has, when you have the meeting with them and they want a bigger raise, they have to tighten their budget. I mean, not to be mean, but, I mean, that's how it works. Like, you might have to take out a truck or two or not drive a new truck. I mean, it's a possibility, like, it's just how it works.
Well, I'm just here to tell you the insurance is going to be a bigger hit than we've seen. So, some of that may have to be...
I guess I've seen some companies, yeah.
I could have guessed like a 100% last year.
Yeah, it's going to be higher. We haven't been the best of customers. Got a lot of claims. Anything else about the budgets, other than department heads keep...
Yeah, I talk with mostly everybody. I think a lot, everybody's close, if not have something already established. So, yeah, this is, like I said, a lot of things roll off of this, this dollar. So, once we have something to go off of, it's a little easier to start, start seeing, seeing the full picture.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. As far as the ARPA, do you have ideas for what you want to do with that, or probably you have to decide on this year, right?
That has to be obligated.
Obligated by the end of this year, so there's the other...
We have to have contracts or invoices by the end of the year.
And if, it may be discussed in the executive session.
Well, remember, executive sessions are depurposed purposes.
But it would still be a part of that discussion.
Okay.
Thank you for the advice.
Do you want to add that to it?
Well, it's just...
It's all related.
It's just how you, it's just a part of the funding. Talking about property.
But I'm saying just for the, yeah, overall expenses.
Well, it could be discussions over property and how to fund...
Financing.
Who the finances of it if. Thank you.
She was here for it.
I know, I know. Okay. Do you have anything else?
You have anything else? Department heads, Jeremy?
Three weeks from tomorrow, and now we'll open up this Lifewide project. I highly recommend that you consider a special meeting. And we'll end up on the chat. And we get good results after we're in the chat. But I highly recommend that you at least be thinking about maybe that Friday or Monday. Have a special day to review the results. We will only have hours to respond. If we're over then, we'll figure out why we're going to accept it or not.
July 10th. If this day, you're saying Friday or Monday, well, the next meeting would be...
100% of it, it may not. If it's over, we just need to be prepared because we don't have just a day or two here there to respond to them.
Friday morning. Well, if it's Monday, the Tuesday, the next meeting, the normal meeting. But I think they give us less than 40 hours.
So, you're kind of talking about if the bids are opened on the 10th, maybe schedule something on the 11th or 12th to review?
11th or 12th for review, that Thursday, Friday, Monday. I wouldn't do it later than that. I can ask for a couple days, which...
Well, because our regular July meeting, our second July meeting would be on the 16th.
The Tuesday.
Okay.
Correct. But you're going to need a whole time in case we need to reappropriate money or...
Yeah.
And to actually make a definite decision at the river schedule council meeting.
And those, those are awarded on the 10th, or it's opened on the 10th, I mean?
They're open on the 10th.
Okay. So, you'll know the 10th, right?
Yes. After the 10th, and we will have to respond if we are going to accept it in or ask it not to reject it. And then we will have to go back to consulting company, evaluate the design, and go back out. We have options. I just want to be prepared. Because we will have, they are 20% within 30 days. We will have our 20% by first of August if it releases. So, that puts you, you know, if you're doing additional appropriation, that puts you really close to your time. You can push it out around 45 days, but it won't let you lay off for that. We do have additional funds programmed in the budget, so I don't want to argue. It's just, we won't know what the bid is or what the bid is to delay the location right after launch of the channel.
Do we want to set that? I guess Craig's not here, it's more of a Board of Works. I guess Craig's not here, it's more of a Board of Works. What do Board of Works call it?
To review bids.
When's construction on that? When's construction?
It's entirely up to the contractor.
This year yet or?
Entirely up to the contractor because whoever the low bid is or high low bid, if they have a longer schedule, they can start within 45 days.
Yeah, but.
Just accept the bid.
But yeah, it'll be Board of Works decision to. We have to go to that.
Say in 120 days, it's probably going to be.
I don't count for me, it would be in the time to authorize additional preparation on Thursday for Tuesday.
So that we just need a special Board of Works.
Two days. It's going to be 48 hours, don't it?
For additional appropriation.
We got to pump the volume up like Gary, that's a 10-day, that's a 10-day.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to set it up now or since Craig's not here, do we just do that over email? Plan on, do you got anything you love?
Building houses.
Because I would, I'd feel more comfortable if we did it morning or whatever works for everybody. But just so that way we got enough time to make sure we all.
And I can get the numbers out as soon as we see them, so you guys have a plan. You know, we may not need a meeting, but I would hate to not scan them.
And if, if we schedule a special meeting, it's, I think we still have the meeting regardless, but just to go over it.
It should be just Board of Works.
There is some additional things that we talked about. We're not going to redo them, but instead stop at halfway here in the block along to the next 200 feet or 300 feet and complete, you know, the siding, the, the sidewalks and the lighting. That would be a separate, which if you have those figures based off of the mid-numbers. So at that, at that time, we can discuss that also.
So I guess I can do that. I can get a hold of Craig tomorrow and make sure. Plan on that though.
Anything else? Kevin G. Jeff.
We have two more Fridays of our open house. And we have roughly two weeks left in our application period to accept applications. Currently in for a good return.
Kirk.
Yeah, I got one from Brent Miller before he left. I asked him if Martin office for this, this would be relocated. So anybody who goes out there that can get a better idea of what it looks like. I agree to do that. So if he gets that done, he will notify me and then I will notify everybody.
Thanks.
Good to hear.
Aaron. Bill.
Good.
Jamie. Josh.
All the smells are approved, have to check out on the alcohol. So you should be able to get, schedule it together, you put on, if I start this project. Get a couple of questions on the checkout. All our sensors that we put in are back that we got from helping so far. I started smoking yesterday. Not a lot of points of interest. Jamie is all helps us today.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
We have all the CSO, the Jackson CSO in some of the, we only have two red lines on Monroe Street, all that slope. I guess you need to get in the area that we found, come up the plain surface and more street feedbacks.
Good, good. Yeah, I think that, those smart sensors were, were a great idea and they, they painted a nice picture. Well, not so nice picture, I guess.
I think while the big, like, there's a lot of water pouring in our system. I think they're pretty existent.
Good.
Awesome.
Just a lot of water.
Right.
But there's not too many.
Right. But I think, I think you're right. And just the few that you've shown me already, it's, it's a lot of water that we could take out of the system, which is huge. Okay. I need the council.
I'm going to motion the payment claim.
Second. Motion second to pay the claim, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
And a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.